Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the study session of May twenty eighth. Danielle, will you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Onisco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp.
Here.
And Councilman.
Here.
Here.
All right. Tonight, Fire Chief Jeff Snyder is, oh, thank you, by the way. Tonight, Fire Chief Jeff Snyder has an update about our fire department. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank Mayor Nisco and Deputy Mayor Sherman for the opportunity and the rest of the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. This is pretty open-ended in the sense of I wasn't a hundred percent sure. There's certain things I wanted to cover and then certain things that that, you know, wasn't exactly sure where to go. So I just thought, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna do it like I was telling a story to a buddy of mine or so forth. So as you already said, I'm Jeff Snyder of the fire chief with such Mason Fire EMS, graduated Shelton High School, grew up on Mason Lake, although I lived, didn't live in town, Shelton, Shelton was my hometown. I remember playing in the tolling when the tolling was at Brewer Park, when they left there, even under the old Dairy Queen before they built the new one. And I remember when McDonald's wasn't in town before they built the first McDonald's or where it is now. Why that was important to me was when I was a kid, I would jump my bike, ride the fourteen miles from Mason Lake into town to play at the arcade, Sheldon Axe, for those who remember that place, play at the arcade, and I had to go to McDonald's, eat a burger and get a coke. So I had enough energy to run my bike back home again. I started in District Five in February nineteen eighty-seven as a volunteer. I was hired in nineteen ninety-two as a firefighter EMT. I've worked virtually every position in the department, from the firefighter EMT to lieutenant, captain, battalion chief, training officer, operations officer, deputy chief, and then took over when Mike Patton retired as the fire chief in August of twenty twenty-two. One of the most common questions I get is, you know, what is CMFE, right? Central Mason Fire EMS. The trend many years ago was to change names to something more reasonable. We were District Five before that. But people ask me, you know, what is Central Mason Fire EMS? And it started with District Five, which was the Allen Victor Fire Department in nineteen fifty-three, and basically moved south all the way through the seventies and eighties until they hit the border of the city of Shelton. In two thousand and eight, the city of Shelton and District Five started a process of an ILA, which, which provided fire protection to the city by District Five. It was mutually beneficial on both sides. District Five needed it. And District Five needed help with funding and support, and the city needed it for the same reasons, you know, so the two got together. Next came Mason County Medic One, which was purchased by District Five several years ago. That in itself was odd for a fire department to buy a private ambulance. It's not happened very often in, in history in Washington State. Next came Mason County Partnership Eleven with the annexation, excuse me, the merger of District Eleven into the fire district. And that happened in twenty twenty-three. Soon Mason Three will merge in. So Central Mason is, is all of that, but we're still Mason County Partnership Five. That's our legal name. It hasn't changed. Where do we cover? That's the next question. People say, where, you know, where, what areas do you cover? Well, that's, that's, it's large. And there's really two answers to that. I'm gonna start on the far north end of the fire district. Basically, you're driving down Highway Three and you get to North Mason High School. That's our north border. We cover North, North Mason High School, Allen, Victor, the Victor all the way down three oh two to the Pierce County line, the Lakeland Village, which is up above, up above Allen, Mason and Benson Lakes, Emerald Lake, the Island View area, the Anthony Road area, Pickering, which includes Phillips Lake and Spencer Lake, all of Arsene Island, Agate, Timber Lake, Shorecrest, Deer Creek, Bay Shore, Lake Limerick, Johns Ferry, Beacon Prairie, Jensen and Brockdale Roads, all the way out to Ponderosa. Additionally, we cover the Island Lake and Oak Park areas. Those are areas that we took over with the merger of Mason Eleven. And last but not least, and mostly not the least important to us, is the city of Shelton, which we serve through an ILA. In total, CMFE covers approximately one hundred and sixty-five square miles that we provide fire and EMS protection. But I said there was two answers, and that's because our medic units actually provide paramedic advanced life support to seven other fire districts along with this, the Washington State Penitentiary and the Washington State Patrol Academy. Our medic units cover an area approximately seven hundred square miles. If you add in the parts of Olympic National Park, that expands our area to their, that re-mason kind of expands our, our coverage to nine hundred square miles. So we cover a decent amount of area with our rigs. Who are we? That's another question I get. And really, the truth is, our product's people. That's who we are. Our firefighters, our medics, our front office staff, our mechanic, all of them. I always tell the people, our product's people. We have fifty-four career firefighters, twenty-eight firefighter CMTs, twenty-six firefighter paramedics. Then in, the number jumps with the District Three merger that's coming in, where the number will jump to F P positions will jump to almost sixty, so fifty-four to sixty. We also have five-day shift positions, one fire marshal, one deputy fire marshal, one firefighter mechanic, one firefighter facility, and one captain of training and health and safety. Our administrative staff consists of our three front office scouts. The ladies up front are the backbone of our operation. If any one of them were to leave, our boat would stop moving forward. They truly are the backbone of our operation. I have three chief officers, myself as the fire chief. Greg Gates down there in the end is deputy chief. Next to him is Brandon Searls as a division chief with us, and we have five commissioners. That's seventy employees counting all day, but there's more. We have twenty-eight volunteers, three volunteer chaplains, so totally about a hundred and one members of Central Mason Fire. All that staff above runs out of five fully staffed stations, five-one in Allen, five-three at Vincent Lake, five-four at Limerick, five-seven at Pickering, and five-eight with the city of Shelton. With the merger, Mason Three, which is their station, Station Three-One, it'll turn into our Station Five-Two. That'll become a six fully staffed station in the, in the, in the fire district. And lastly, we have Station Five-Eleven, which is partially staffed. We use volunteers, overflow career staff, and, and our auxiliary firefighters to staff at seventy to eighty percent of the time, which in the future, we're hoping as soon as possible to staff that full-time. Apparatus, we have nine fire engines, nine ambulances, four brush engines, three tenders, which you guys might call water tankers, two ladder trucks, one air support unit, fifteen, fifteen staff vehicles, supporting three pieces of equipment. With the merger of Mason Three, that brings another eight to ten additional pieces of equipment on board. At the Shelton Station, which is more, getting more down to brass tacks here in the city, at the Shelton Station, Station Five-Eight, our minimum staffing, daily staffing is five. That's our minimum, which is one battalion chief, two on an engine, and two on a medic unit. It's not uncommon for us to have additional staffing with either paid staff that were heavy that day, which if that's the case, we bring that additional staffing typically down to Station Five-Eight. Or we have our volunteers, our reserve firefighters, that'll pull shift. Most of our volunteers don't live in the fire district anymore. The days of response volunteers are, are virtually gone. That's something that that everyone's dealing with the same thing. We do have one area of the fire district, which is the Mason Eleven area. We still do have some response from home volunteers up there that help support that station when it's not fully staffed. When we have these extra people, they just get put on the units, depending on their training and their certifications, they either augment, we put a third or a fourth on a rig, or sometimes it allows us to staff additional rigs like the ladder truck, a brush truck, or just a agent. Out of Station Five-Eight, one one-engine, one ladder, one medicant, and one brush truck, and one command buddy. Our call volume in twenty twenty-three for CMFE was ten thousand four hundred and thirty-two total responses. That's twenty-eight point five calls a day. Now, that itself, twenty-eight point five calls in a twenty-four hour period is, is busy for us, but it doesn't come like that. We'll have days we'll run forty calls and we'll have days we run fifteen calls. When I was a battalion chief, the busiest I ever was, it's not a non-storm day, and why I say that is when we have a winter storm or we have a windstorm, our call line gets exponentially increased. So it kind of fluffs those numbers a little bit because they're usually branched, trees down, things like that. But my busiest shift as a battalion chief, forty-eight hours, ran sixty-eight calls in forty-eight hours. The crews, the crews work, they're, they're busy. My crews are, I have good people. I'm gonna get a little more specific to the city of Shelton. In twenty twenty-three, CMFE, CMFE, and respond to three thousand six hundred and sixty-two responses within the city. Out of those, two thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight were EMS calls. The other eight hundred and eighty-six were really everything else, fires, hazards, conditions, service calls. We average about two house fires a month. That, and again, that comes in streaks. We'll, we'll have a month, we'll have five, we'll have a month without zero. And so you just don't know. And that's only house fires. There's a ton of other smaller incidents and fires that we deal with. Beauty burn fires, electrical wall outlet fires, air conditioning or heating units that have problems, you name it. When I first got in the fire service and I had an officer tell me one time, people call the fire department when they don't know what to do. And that is the truest statement I've ever heard, because some of the stuff that we get called for, it's like, I don't know where in the playbook that says we're supposed to handle this, but our crews go out and they do either try to help them with it, or we direct them where they need to go. When I became fire chief in twenty twenty-two, I had several goals. One was the merge, to complete the merger with Mason Eleven at the CMFE. This was mutually beneficial, just as the ILA was with the city, and how it benefits the city now and how it benefits Central Mason is, it puts the station on top of the hill on the north side of us, our, our side of town, which helps us to keep more units available. If there's an incident in town, an engine five-eight or the crews are tied up, before Station Eleven, Five-Eleven came into the mix, the next station was coming out of Lake Limerick or coming out of Spencer Lake. So that's a long run. And so with them coming on board, it actually has lowered the response times within the city and helped the city itself. That was completely, the merger of Mason Eleven was completed June of twenty twenty-three. Number two was to staff another station. When I first became the fire chief, I said I wanted to staff a station in the central part of our fire district. We had a large hole, an area that, that we weren't, we were not covering very well. My staff and I worked very hard. The lid lift absolutely was essential to, to make that happen. And we were able to staff Station Five-Three, which is at Mason Lake, in the central part of the fire district, and that happened in May of twenty twenty-three. Again, how does this help the city? How does it help? It puts more resources in the central part of the fire district, which means those resources that could come this way are more available. The third thing I wanted to work on was the merging of the Grapevine Fire Department into Central Mason, again, for the same reasons, mutually beneficial. It's at the north end of our fire district. It helps us to support our north units. When I used to talk to people when I was back in the day when Chief Yates and I were working medic units together, and I would tell people from other fire departments, our backup is twenty-one miles away. And they would look at us like they had horns going around our heads. Are you serious? I'm like, yeah, our only backup is twenty-one miles, twenty-one miles away. And over the years, that, we only had two staff stations at times. So having six is, is huge. And having two of them as close as they are in the Grapevine Fire Station and the Allen Fire Station really helps. That should be completed July first of twenty twenty-four. We are on track to actually have that done. Fourth was to upgrade our fleet with the purchase of two additional medic units, which, which we did. We additionally, we also remount our boxes on our medicants. When you look at an ambulance and you see that the square box on the back, that part is, is, we can, we can refurb those. The chassis are really a little wear out. It's not so much the boxes. So we take them down to Brown Northwest and Lewis County. They pull the box off, they refurb the box, rewire it, and make it all, refloor it, re-efolster it, do the things you need to do, and we put that on a new chassis. Typically, we remount a box three times before we finally toss the box. Gets to the point we can't do, it's had structural issues usually with aluminum or welds and so forth. So we were able to do that. The other piece of that puzzle was power lift gurneys. As society has gotten larger, and I, I know it's not, shouldn't say that's happening, but it has. As society's gotten larger, we use power lift gurneys to help our people pick up larger people. They're basically electric hydraulic lifts that are attached to the gurney that helps them pick up patients and put in the back of the ring. It saves our people's backs and saves our people from injury, shoulder injuries, and so forth, so forth. Each one of those gurneys is roughly about fifty thousand dollars. And we bought, I believe, six of them. So that was a, that was something I was most proud to complete for our crews. That also happened in twenty twenty-three. The last was to upgrade our ladder truck. This was also completed in fall of twenty twenty-three. And I think what I want to talk tonight with, with the council about is that this was a purchase that was a partnership with the city of Shelton. In the ILA, it discusses a lot of these issues, and one of them discusses payment, so forth, and these, and the city and the fire, the fire district forthwith purchasing and replacing our nineteen ninety-one hundred and five-foot Pierce, which is the big yellow one you see driving around, and we call it Big Bird. You guys can see if you figure out why we call it that. It's up to you. And we replaced that with a twenty thirteen hundred and nine-foot Rosenbauer, which the crews have actually named Clifford, the big, like, big red dog. And you'll see that one outside when you see it, because it's big and it's red. We really went back and forth about how we were gonna do this, whether we were gonna buy new, we were gonna buy used. And we went down the used route. I think it was the best route for the taxpayers of the city. I think it was the best route for the taxpayers of the county. And I'll explain why. A branded ladder truck that would meet the specifications of that piece of equipment that's out front right now is two, two to two and a half million dollars. And that was old numbers. I will tell you, I think they're probably a little bit higher than that now, but we'll stay with the two to two and a half million dollars. And the delivery on that's two to three years now. So if we were ordered today, we would have been seeing it for three years. And so, you know, we, we knew we needed to replace Big Bird. Although it's in really good shape, we're gonna keep it as a reserve equipment. We're gonna put some money into it that needs to be done. It'll be out of service for a while against repairs done. But we are gonna keep it. We start searching for a ladder truck. And I, I'm gonna give credit where credit's due. Chief Searls is actually the one that, that hunted this down and found it. It was a truck, truck out of Texas. I like to say the two hundred and thirteen, two thousand thirteen Rosenbauer for six hundred thousand dollars. We negotiated with the sellers. It was a brokerage that sells, used apparatus. And we were able to get a price down a little bit, and shipping costs and stuff, it worked out to be five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So that was split in half with the city of Shelton, so two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that the city stepped up and, and paid with, with us, which was a huge help. Now, there's some advantages, besides having a newer piece of equipment. One of the disadvantages we had of Big Bird was the yellow ladder truck is, it was just what we call a straight stick. It had no pump. It was just a stick. So a ladder truck has, on it has a hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy-six feet of ground ladders, which these guys will show you when they open up the back of ours. There's different, all different sizes and lengths and so forth. And obviously, it has a ladder, which is what everybody, everybody sees. In order for us to flow water through that, we had to have another engine, because there's no pump, there's no tank, there's, it's just a pipe that runs up the, the ladder. And so the disadvantage to that is with Engine Five-Eight is tied up on another incident, which we had happened. We'll be on a car fire and we'll get a house fire at the same time. Or we'll be on CPR with the engine crews already working, and we'll get a house fire or something. We had no backup pumper. Now, we would move units out of the county into the city to try to make up for that, but that also ties up units. Going back to what I said in the beginning is that when you're covered seven hundred to nine hundred square miles and you take two medicants out of service and out of ten thousand runs, we get backed up pretty quickly. So, so for us to be able to get a piece of equipment that takes less manpower and is less manpower intensive and time intensive to use was really important. Plus, it gave us backup engine in the city that was always in the city. And for the ILA, we're required to do that. So we wanted to make sure we stayed within that. The other, the, I, I hear a bunch of questions about it. One of them, I was out there working one day, and one of the local retired dentists that was walking around town said, how come we need a ladder truck? It's the tallest building in town is four stories. And I said, well, it's not actually about height, it's about reach. And my, my reasoning for that is, by the time you park the ladder, our old ladder truck, our first ladder truck was a fifty footer. And by the time we parked it at the end of the driveway and we extended it, we were lucky, we reached the building. Because you burn up fifty feet of, fifty feet of stick, just get into the house, get into the building. And so when we went to purchase a second ladder truck, we looked at seventy-five footers because you can say with a single axle, there's, there's advantages to that. But again, we were gonna deal with the same issues. So we decided to go ahead and then move on to a hundred plus, hundred plus feet. The advantage of when you need a ladder truck and you need an aerial master street, which is what you see on TV when it's a big dog and funny show, when, when they're burning down half a block somewheres. The only thing that works in that situation is a ladder truck. Hand lines from the ground don't work. Two and a half inch hand lines from the ground, doesn't matter, it doesn't work. And the way that you cut off fire is to get above it when you have a large complex like that. A great example of that is the Port of Shelton, when the, when those are, remember the Port Fire, when the old Sawtooth building was burning. What stopped the transfer of that fire into the next building was, was the ladder truck. We, although the crews that got there beforehand were doing a great job, and they, they were doing everything they could. We needed to get above it and cut it off. And we did that, and within twenty to thirty minutes of the ladder truck being in place, we knew we weren't gonna lose any more of that building. We'd written off what we were gonna lose. And so that, again, that's where height comes into play. So it's not so much about, about height, it's about reach. The other benefit to the city and to the taxpayers and to business owners in the city is what's called WSRP rating, which is the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau. And if you're not in, if you're not familiar with the Washington Survey Rating Bureau is, is what rates the fire department. So they come in, they look at your training and equipment and stations and staffing, and you name it, they look at it, and then they come with a number. There's number ten, and there's number one. In the state of Washington, there's not a lot of number one fire departments. Bellevue Fire Department's a number one. Puget Sound Fire is number one. There's, there's some other ones around. Most are sixes and sevens, fives. And so us having a ladder truck and us having a backup ladder truck is a significant step to us to lower our WSRP rating. We were very close to a four when we were rerating, when we were rated. Last time, we're due to be rated in twenty-five, and our hope is that we can get down to a four. We've been working diligently on some of the issues that we had that kept us from reaching a four. Some of those are outside of our control. To be perfectly honest, with the water system in the city is part of the problem. Because there's, there's flow rate problems that flows are too low, and so WSRP grades, it's down on that. So some of it is, is external that we don't have any control over, but we're, we're really close to doing that. So the benefit is, when you have a lower number, your home insurance or your business insurance is lower because the fire protection is better. So that benefits the taxpayers. To give you an idea, and I only know this because we were dealing, we were talking to District, District Three merger, one of the people in the room happened to be an insurance person and mentioned, because District Three's WSRP rating post-merger will goes, goes from a, a seven to what we thought was a five. The truth is, it's actually a six, but it doesn't, that's not the point. The point was, it was a hundred and seventy-six dollars a year savings from going to that seven to a five. It's about a hundred dollars a year for a person to go from the seven, to, to go from that seven to a six. So, and the rate gets better, the more the number gets lower. So if you could, you go from a five to a four, that in that savings is actually greater than going from a six to a five. That makes sense. So those are some of the benefits of, of buying Clifford and, and, and for us and the city. Clifford's outside. And hereafter, I'm done, I'm gonna let you guys ask, ask any questions you'd like to ask. When we're done answering questions or, or Mark, if you have something you want to bring up, we'll go outside and Captain Zipper, Mr. Moustache back there, and Captain Ward will, will help show you guys the ladder truck. And then I don't know if the medicant's here or not. We did bring a medicant over. I think we're gonna drive. We have the medicant over here, so you guys can have a seat in the back one, or if you stare at the ceiling when you're riding in the back one, you can see the rest of it looks like. So any questions?
I, yeah. Recently, I'm trying to commissioners, state of emergency, and how, how does that affect our central mission?
Central Mason wasn't really overly affected. We provide, we have what's called the trauma license for, for all these fire districts that we cover. We have the trauma license, which means we provide the ALS services. So when, when Mesa Twelve, when they declared a state emergency and took over Mason Twelve, or however you wanna word that, it didn't really change a lot for us because we were already responding out there. Now, we did provide support services to the incident management team. We had two of our individuals that went down and, and helped the incident management team along, and we most certainly stayed in touch with the state of Washington. The state of Washington got ahold of us and wanted to make sure there was gonna be no changes in ALS system or the, or the EMS transport system, which we assured there was nothing changing on our end, and we would continue to respond, and just as we always have. So, good question.
Two questions. One, we know how our officers, how is the DCR helping making your jobs easier?
Oh, most certainly. Most certainly, because we're able to call them, and so we're not tied in law enforcement. And then oftentimes, I can tell you actually a personal story. I live in town. I live up on Engleside. I, I, one of, one of the, one of the people that DCR interacts with ended up in my front yard. My wife called and said, there's someone in our front yard. I said, okay, I don't want her out there. And I knew who this person was from the days of responding when I was a battalion chief. And, you know, I told dispatch, said, hey, I got so-and-so here. They're clearly having a, a moment, their moment, and you know, and they said, great. And I said, and they said, do, do you need DCR in law? And I said, DCR's fine. They'll, they'll come up. And so DCR got there, they knew who this person was. The person knew who they were. And it was handled really well. I know the crews, the crews appreciate it. Yeah.
Second question. We've been talking on and off over the years of annexation, the benefits to you and fire department, the benefits to the city. Where are we at on that?
Mark and I talked about it several times. There were some housing things, items on our side that Central's working on. I think we're really close to having all that stuff. I think, or I feel pretty confident that we could move forward. I know that there's some, that Mark and I and, and those that are gonna be involved need, need to discuss the strategy on the other side. At one point, we talked about twenty-five, I think. I don't believe it'll be twenty-five, as we better get started. So we're probably looking at it twenty-six, maybe as soon as we try to rerun that. You know, I think there's, there's hurdles we're gonna have to overcome.
It's a strategic process, right? As any campaign is, particularly when you're talking about a district that could potentially grow to incorporate the city of Shelton. At the same time, you have a lot of constituency that you have to provide the information to and educate and inform. Right now, we are contributing or paying for the services to turn about one point eight million dollars a year for fire EMS services. Now, we have the EMS levy within the city of Shelton that collects about five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars annually. That's basically a transfer. It's really a couple hundred dollars difference of what goes in and out. And we, we provide and perform some of the maintenance on the, on the building at Five-Eight downtown. So that's still under city ownership. So we maintain essentially, if, if Central Mason moved out of it tomorrow, we would still have a functioning facility. So HVAC, electrical systems and things like that, that we still provide maintenance and operations to. So, again, about one point eight million. We have to communicate what that does to our community, to constituents in the city of Shelton, what that means to them, as well as everybody else out of Central Mason. It's, it can be confusing, to say the least, on how, how the, how taxation works, especially when you talk about the, you know, our ad valorem and what we collect and how that's kind of communicated to as a, as a per thousand rate within the, within, with two individuals' tax rate. So probably another workshop, more specifically addressed to that kind of, that kind of discussion and joint, joint meetings with Central Mason's board coming up. So we could get a plan put together, if that's truly what, what both Central Mason and the city wants to do.
Yeah, I think for, for us, I can speak, you know, people ask me, especially in the county, well, why do I want to do this? Why is this? And I tell people, think of like you own a home and you have renters. Is that for long-term planning purposes, to know, although we've had a great relationship with the city for all these years, and it really has been a really good relationship, you know, things change, right? And for both sides. And I don't think, I don't foresee that. But at some point, you know, we need to be able to do long-term planning and say, yes, this is going to be in the game twenty years from now for long-term planning purposes and, and, and of course, much more sure this year. But I think that I was described as you have renters, and all of a sudden the renters move out, now you gotta pay them more, you know, and so, yeah.
This is a trend that we're seeing all over the place with RFAs, regional fire authorities, annexations. I think most recently, Thurston County, probably was the end of last year, with Olympia and Tumwater, although I don't take it past. It's a trend. It's where we're going. I think we're seeing these smaller fire districts, especially rural fire districts, start to think about how they can provide the services to their constituency when you have another rural fire district right next door. You have some administration, duplicate administration, right? Duplicate duplication of equipment, apparatus, some staff, and it's more efficient just to combine and provide those services over time. We saw that in two thousand and eight in the city of Shelton, combined with Moses Mason Five at that point. And I think this annexation is a progression in that, in that lifespan, right? Just comes about.
Well, I know everybody wants to see this fire truck, but so potentially, we've got, what, five hundred homes maybe in the next year or even two? I mean, pretty immediate, I think, some, some stuff starting now. What are we ready for that?
Yeah, we, I was, I was talking with Hallmark and with Jay about, you know, looking at some impact fees because there is impact to us. You know, we, we adding, you know, two hundred is, maybe not, but when you start to talk about five hundred and a thousand and beyond, most certainly, there's an impact to fire protection and staffing levels and the things that the fire district has to continue to provide. You guys would say, well, we are, you're, you're, you're such a one percent. You live for every year, so, you know, the, you know, the demand grows much faster than, than what our budget grows. So, yeah, it's something that we have to discuss.
Chief, you mentioned water, water capacity. We talked about storage a number of times and the need for storage to meet fire code, meet, meet flow. Those are things that are addressed through our GFC programs, right? Our impact fees for new construction on water services and connections, those pay for those capital and Our impact fees for new construction on water services, uh, and connections, those pay for those capital improvements. Um, fire system, schools, parks, those are all considered, uh, eligible for, uh. In that fees or jump facility charges because the existing tax rate doesn't pay for those capital services and that the expansion though. So if they need another fire, um, station, fire facility at some point, that's going to come most likely through supplemental, uh, funding. Probably a bond issue. Uh, you can offset that bond issue by having, uh, those, those impact fees in place and collect some money upfront to do that.
And do they have to be their own entity, away from the city for that?
Through the top planning through the city.
Absolutely.
And I mean, because we're looking at two thousand homes in what the next ten years, potentially just.
We hope so. I, the, the, um, Meadows Edge, uh, building permits, I think are released. Maybe this week, so thirty six houses. We anticipate the hearing, uh, examiner's ruling on Olympic Heights to come in this week. And so that should give, uh, preliminary plat approval. They can start turning dirt this year. Um, with the hope that by next spring, uh, maybe they're going vertical. Um, and that's one hundred and ninety nine houses. And at this point, that's not a phase development. They would, they would move through that. That entire one ninety nine, uh, in one process.
Other questions?
Great presentation.
I want, I want to touch on fire marshal services. That's, that's really important to cities' operations, um, within the, in our local agreement with, with Central Mason. I think provide fire marshal services. That's an additional, additional fee, um, outside of the fire protection services. Uh, what we did in the past, we paid a flat fee annually for these fire marshal services. So that's an individual that, um, brings all our, all our. Uh, development permits, does regular inspections, does fire investigation, uh, in the city of Shelton. Uh. About two years ago, I think. I think it's close to two years ago. Yeah, we, we implemented a rate structure within. Our, our fire permits and operational permits, um, that hasn't necessarily proved to be as, um. I think has, I think it was aspiration, I guess, to say that, that it would, they would offset the cost of providing those services. So that's something I want to bring back to you.
Yeah, we added fees to, we added fees, they could charge, pass through fees and, yeah, so.
So we, we were, we became much more proactive in our, in, in our, um, inspections and what we call operational permits. So now depending on the occupation and class of that occupation, there may be an annual, a biannual, semi-annual sometimes inspection. And there's a fee attached to that to pay for that service.
Is there, there's a problem with collecting, correct?
E- e- exactly right. Um, obviously, and then we have one entity providing the service. We have another entity permitting it. Uh, and tracking it. So, yeah, there's, there's opportunities to miss something. There's opportunities for. We don't want to be punitive to a business. We want to give them the opportunity to, you know, not only have a safe environment for their customers and and their employees. But also the opportunity to pay that at, you know, at the best time. It might be, uh, might come around for them to pay that. But obviously, there's, there's some point when, um, we're being billed, the city's being billed for Central Mason. We want to recoup those fees to. To offset that cost at the same time. So we're kind of juggling that, trying to find what, what the best fit is, but, um. It's a little more labor intensive than it was before with the flat fee. And that's what we're seeing. We're seeing inefficiencies being created, more labor, especially with reduced staffing. And what's going to serve our community, make our community safe, as well as be the most efficient process for us. So, um, we'll probably be seeing a proposal, um, that would go back or at least compare the two, uh, the two, uh, processes. So you could consider those in the future.
Because we paid for the complete fire marshal, correct, before we changed it?
Not in its entirety, no. No, it was a sixty thousand dollar annual payment, obviously, and pay for all the services, but they're providing services throughout the, throughout the district as well.
Yeah, we, it's, it's the interest that you could batrate a flat fee. And, and we'd love to do it the other way and we discussed more, bring up something, we discussed some other options. Or however.
Right. You want to see a fire truck?
So we have any questions?
I mean, do you have any questions or do you have anything else that you want to bring up to the council that maybe the next ten years we're going to need to? To look at? After these guys in the bathroom, but ask Mustache back there.
No, uh, I, I, I do want to say this again. I, I think the relationship between the city of Shelton and Central Mason has been, and has been. Uh, has gone very well. Uh, I have friends of mine and other fire departments chiefs that I talked to that. You know, they're like, wow, you know, how, how was this managed to do this this whole time? They're said, I said, we just have really good people. And we, and I think the big thing is we're able to talk to each other, you know, um, Mars, I'm ready to pick up the phone. Um, Chad before it wasn't ready to pick up the phone. You know, I'm not ready to pick up the phone and say, hey, we, we need, let's, let's, let's do a minor course correction now. So this doesn't turn into a big problem down the road. And we've been able to do that. And I think that that has. I compliment the city for that and also the council and the employees and and of the city for making that work. Uh, because, you know, sometimes we have competing agendas. They're not always the same, you know, and, uh, but we, we get lost in them also. I, I thank you for that.
At the end of the day, the common goal is public safety, right? So we keep that in mind. Set some of the other issues aside to get to reach that common goal. And it's, it's not too hard, right? It's not too hard. Let's work together.
So. Good.
Doesn't he have sixty three dogs?
All right. Is this, nobody else coming back in? All right. Does the council have any new items for discussion? I just have a, a question, uh, so the whole council. So apparently that in July, the, the county is going to clear some. Some homeless camps up there by the railroad tracks. And I want to know if we have a plan for when they all come back into town. I know that I attended a meeting last weekend and to talk there was any plans.
Yeah, there's another meeting this Friday. Um, Dave Wyndham with Mesa County Public Council is coordinating. Uh, yeah, certainly there wasn't as much, um, I think definitive. Um, plan from last week's meeting. Hopefully there's, there's more of an effort, more of, I think, collaborative effort to. Make sure those individuals, um, are receiving some of the services. They're providing, they're providing, um, more information, what services are available. Um, the only shelter provider wasn't at the meeting, um, last week. I believe they will be there this week. So hopefully, you know. That's an opportunity to make sure those individuals get there. But, um, beyond that. Yeah, I think we'll certainly see that influx. We're talking about, about the. Highway three at the Navy Railroad property and, um, the individuals will be coming this way as close as it serves it. So we'll. We'll, uh, continue working with some of the service providers, but, um. Long term, um. It, you know, I guess we can wait around and see what happens or we continue working with some of these providers, I guess, with the plan on, uh, what's next.
Yeah. Councilmember Shap, I joined, um, Crossroads to go on up there. We saw at eleven noonish, we saw maybe fifteen people total. So I imagine there's probably, you know, if they were there at peak hours, maybe there'd be more, probably double that, I would think, but. So I, I just want to know that what we're going to do when they, when they show up downtown. So if we got a plan, if we can. You know, this meeting Friday, if we can get the county to, you know, help us out a little bit.
So in the meantime, um, programs like Crossroads and Youth Connection have been going out there, letting them know and in advance this is going to happen. Here's some services so that you're not caught off guard. And they have been really proactive and they will continue to do.
Well, we, I understand, I understand that, but there's going to be the ones that aren't going to go into the, go into the community lifeline. They're not going to go. You know, they don't want the services. They're going to just, they're just going to hang out. So, and I do know Crossroad, I went up there with them. So I, I realize that they're doing that. But they are, we are seeing people already come in and people have already, are already telling Crossroads that, that they're, they've already come in because they've enrolled that. Camp's going to be closed. So then, so, yeah, it's getting a little busier downtown. So. I don't know if we got a plan, if we can, what we can do. Maybe it's time to talk about that mitigation site that we need to. Figure out here one of these days, so. But any other questions on that?
No, I think I'm actually going to go to the Crossroads tomorrow and go there. That's not the issues.
So the more often they're offered, eventually hopefully they're. Except that, because a lot of times the first time you offer services, they're going to say no. And the second time they'll say no, but then maybe, maybe no. Does accept services and then they're like, okay, maybe I should too. If you just keep bugging them, maybe they will.
Maybe as time gets closer, others start, yeah. You're going, what's happening?
True. You know, real sad. Not everybody is, you know, a street zombie. You know, we met a lady down at the very end of the tracks that has a job. Money bank account, just not enough to live, not enough to get a place to live. And, uh. There's nothing in Crossroads and she fled domestic violence. There's nothing in, in Turning Point for her. And she's been up there for three or four, three or four months. You know, and she said, I got a job. I got, I got enough money for a first and last. She said, but there ain't nowhere for her to live, nowhere for her to afford to live. So that's, that's pretty sad, you know, because we, all we hear is, uh, people that are just leading society, but there's people up there that's not just. That actually just can't afford to live. So, but that was, uh, my question.
I'll, uh, I'll provide counsel and update from the, the Friday meeting with Department of Health and the service providers.
Cool. Any other new items for discussion? And this meeting is adjourned at seven eleven P M. The famous gas station when I was a kid.